We call this regular meeting to order. To get started tonight, I'd like you all to stand and please recite the Pledge of Allegiance. To get started tonight, we're going to have to square in our two new commissioners, Martin Kransky and Michael McCall, and I'll let Pete go first.
Okay, Mike, repeat after me. I am Michael McCall.
I am Michael McCall.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the City of Princeton?
The ordinances of the City of Princeton.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the City Council?
Of the office of member of the City Council.
For the city of Princeton, Illinois?
For the city of Princeton, Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, Mike. Congratulations.
Okay, Mike, raise your hand. Repeat after me. I, Martin Kransky?
I, Martin Kransky.
Do you solemnly swear?
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the ordinances of the City of Princeton?
And the ordinances of the City of Princeton.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the City Council?
Of the office of the City Council.
Of the City of Princeton, Illinois?
Of the City of Princeton, Illinois.
To the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now, the new council is seated. You will call roll.
All right, Mayor Quirrell?
Here.
Councilmember Newman?
Here.
Gomez?
Here.
Kransky?
Here.
McCall?
Here.
And I will go to, per for our business is to pass a considered ordinance for passage. And we will give the City Council member.
I move that we approve of suspension of the requirement for a second meeting of ordinance O dash two one dash zero one three.
Second?
Motion has been second. Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Yes.
Gomez?
Yes.
Kransky?
Yes.
McCall?
Yes.
Mayor Quirrell?
Yes.
Okay, so next order of?
Yeah, go ahead and?
Next order of business is to?
Ordinance.
Our move that we approve ordinance O dash two one dash zero one three establishing a public participation policy.
Second?
Motion's been second. Comments? Call roll.
Councilmember Newman?
Aye.
Gomez?
Aye.
Kransky?
Aye.
McCall?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. Okay, so tonight, we're going to have a discussion or a public comment. Actually, we've got a public comment period. We're going to listen and hear what everyone has to say. I think there's still a misconception in the community that the city is trying to ban food trucks, or we don't want them in Princeton, and that is not true. The city is fully behind food trucks. We have been from the beginning, and there's never one split of time when we have said that we were against food trucks. So if you're here to speak in favor of food trucks for being in the city of Princeton, it's all fine and well, but we're all on the same page. So that's what you're here to speak for. It'd be nice if maybe you didn't, so we can save each other a lot of time tonight. So I'm going to go ahead and open the public comments period. And whoever wants to jump up first, go ahead. All you have to do is state your name and speak.
I'm Pete Gardner, live down on Thompson Street. Hello, everybody. I'm in, I'm bored of food trucks. We've got a problem with the food trucks coming in. Maybe we should change some menus in time, that's all I got to say. The North End, did anybody go through the Historical Society or whatever when those buildings were changed up on the North End?
What do you mean changed up?
Hmm?
What do you mean changed up?
Well, that's a historic site, right? Didn't somebody just pay over $300,000 for the Clark House?
Knox Hotel?
Yeah.
I don't know what they paid, but it is reasonable.
Well, they paid a lot of money for it, let's just say. And then you go down a block and a half, and they've changed two buildings to look very modern. I just wonder, you know, there's a group supposed to be monitoring that, isn't there?
Well, that's true. The uptown, downtown business districts are a national list of historic places. But the building owners can do what they want with the buildings. And if the building owner wants to look into, what they can do to renovate the buildings with historic beginnings, you know, they can contact the Grove County Historical Society and, or the city to get the, you know, the avenue to go there. There's tax credits available for that kind of thing. But it's up to the, it's up to the building owners. It's their building.
They can change it anywhere they want to then.
Sure can.
Well.
We encourage, you know, to renovate buildings, but I mean again, it's their building, so.
Imagine. But some people change their minds. Thompson Street, thank you for getting it favored. I'm really not a lot of paying off my trucks. Thank you. I'm talking about the West End, not the East End. Okay. I would like to make one suggestion for it, if I could. Could we get some speed bumps put in just between Church and Main? And I'll nominate my place, whatever, you know? People come around those corners just screaming, and nobody seemed to be down with it.
Yeah, I've been at one house and two, so I know what you're talking about, so.
You drive around town, you see these little orange signs holding a flag, and slow down. There are four of them right there on South Church, right around the corner from me. Somebody's got to start holding these people down. And I'm all, you know, speed bumps would do it. I know I did it over in Seaton. The burn ban? No, keep it. I told you the story about my neighbor with the big dog all winter. In the summer, he goes out, crakes it all in the fire and burns it. We don't need that in town. People with asthma and breathing conditions knows what's laying out there now with this stuff out there. So no, keep the burn ban. Two months, one in the spring, one in the fall. That would be fine. We going to do anything but the ATVs running around in town?
Well, if we see an outrun of bump, the police team, they will, they will address it. They'll pull them over, but, you know, we've got, what, two or three on patrol that need to get in kind throughout the entire city, so, you know, if we don't, if we're not just sending you where they are, it's kind of, it's kind of difficult to, unless somebody calls them in and we can get somebody over there wherever they are.
How many offices do we have?
Sixteen.
Sixteen? Okay. Well, I, I think, when I read the paper and try to see where the sheriff is picking people up all the time, very rarely do I see any speeders in Princeton getting picked up. And again, it'd be a big problem. Come off of Thompson Street and look down toward Disco lot, you better be paying real close attention because they're coming up there real fast. I used to have a telephone pole that I looked at. I go back three more telephone poles now, just to make sure that I make it out there before they come to me. It's their booking. Could we get a recycling for the electronics? Can they have that?
Well, Republicans handling that now. They usually are doing like one a year in the fall. They did one last fall. They'll have another one this fall, I'm sure.
Well, I see they're having them in other counties, though. I don't want to start seeing all this stuff in the ditch, you know? That's where it ends. Thank you for the cleanup today, it was very nice. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Just like on the, on the issue with the public comment, with the ordinance, we'd like to try to limit everybody, if possible, you know, to three minutes, you know? Hope everybody can get what they want to say out in three minutes' time. The cumulative period for the public comment speaking is 20 minutes, but with a large group of people, if a lot of people want to speak, obviously we will, we will expand that time period. And again, this is a public, public comment period, and, you know, the council is not going to get into a, you know, a back and forth with the public during the public comment. It's a public comment period, so that's what it's for, is for the public to comment. So who's next?
Hello, my name's John Lilly. So the mayor mentioned that he supports food trucks, and as do I, and so I'm wondering the latest and greatest, of course, that I've heard, the rumors are just that, is that the plan will be to move them to the ends of town. Now, if we're supporting food trucks, but not supporting them in front of Beryl Society, who has been the key factor in bringing them to town and building a culture surrounding them, the fight doesn't seem to be against food trucks from the brick and mortars. It seems to be against Beryl Society. And I think the hard work that he put in during COVID and tried to move his business forward while the people stayed stagnant, that's a town we're trying to move forward. So I hope you can keep that in mind. Thank you.
My name is Gwango H. Baxter. I live right on Main Street. I just want to, I know we're going to keep food trucks a little simple. I just wanted to say that I agree with the original proposed ordinance, ordinance where you said to only take up one spot, and then it was from one section of the street all the way down to right before it hits the diagonal turn. I'm sorry, I don't know streets particularly. I agree completely with that one, mostly because the second one that had come out to be parking across the street into the parking lot by Myrtle, people jaywalk already as it is, and I feel like it would be completely unsafe to have it over there, in my honest opinion, because then people would be jaywalking even more than they already do on a state highway. When it's right there in front of us, we can keep things a little more sheltered, things like that. And the generator noise is also a fair concern, but we are working on that. So that's really all I have to say. I agree with the original proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Nick Jorgez. I am the owner and proprietor of Beryl Society. I would like to welcome anybody after this is all said and done. You can either approach me at the bar in person afterwards for further comment questions. I try to be very transparent in everything that we do, being as community focused and based as we are. I kind of want everybody to take a look at where we are set. The divide in the town is, is serious, and this issue has been going on for roughly six months. I first spoke to the mayor about reading, receiving complaints from another business owner saying that the trucks that we contract to come to Beryl Society are interfering with their dinner hour service. This, however, is simply an illegitimate argument. This is simply jealousy and fear of competition. We live and operate in a free market society, and competition breeds creativity. Again, jealousy and fear of competition are not legitimate factors in this. And if an individual or a group is craving an indoor dining experience, them passing up a food truck at Beryl Society is not going to prohibit them from doing so, or even sway their opinion. However, with that said, and the lack of legitimacy in that particular issue, there are real issues surrounding the food trucks that we at Beryl Society and as a community are willing to address. The first one being generator noise. Mindy from Milk Mustache actually approached me very distraught last week for, because of how drawn out and hostile this topic has become, on Facebook particularly, but also came to me to discuss her concern as a business owner down on the North End over the generator noise. I'm very, I was very pleased to inform her that we, as a business, actually have one vendor that has already purchased a noiseless generator and began using it last weekend. It was excellent. And we, as a business, have been already in contact with multiple electrical contractors to, because we have an exterior outlet that we can change to, to basically suit the needs of a food truck. So again, we're pleased to announce that the generator noise can soon be a non-issue. Parking. We understand and respect the importance of parking in downtown business districts, and that's why we agree with the first ordinance proposal that mobile vendors may only occupy one parallel parking spot on Main Street. Two-part vendors should have to detach their truck from the trailer and then park this truck, or car, whatever it is towing it, in one of the many available surrounding public lots. Fees. We are also very supportive and understand the support in the increase of vendor fees, either on a yearly or per visit basis as well. I think a per visit, per visit basis is very fair, especially, you know, if they're operating in a rapid capacity. If they're here once or twice a week, you know, charge them each time, and that way the city will reap those benefits as well. These are all compromises that we're willing to make, and in a community, we need compromise of communication. On the topic of communication, again, please don't hesitate to contact me or speak to me in person. I feel that many of us, if a lot of us had taken this approach six months ago, we wouldn't be in this tiresome situation that we are currently in now. Lastly, as we move forward and embrace mobile vendors in our community, we must expect backlash from, from any individual, and even due to just a simple disagreement. However, we must listen to our community and support one another in Princeton's everlasting journey of progress. Thank you.
May please counsel your mayor. My name is Steve Kelly, and I would like a little extra time. I'm representing 15 businesses. I have had the privilege and the honor to speak on their behalf, if asked me to speak on their behalf, and I'm going to speak on their behalf to address this issue. First of all, I would like you to know?
Who are these businesses?
You want me to list them out?
I'm just curious.
The business from this town?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's 15, probably more from this town, I'm sorry. Oh, that's fine. Just so you know, the individuals that have asked me to speak on their behalf tonight are 15 businesses and also one food truck. The people who have asked me to speak on their behalf tonight have had years of business in Princeton for 180, over 180 years. They employ over 130 employees, and that's not counting the subcontractors, the individuals that have come into work on their buildings. The years of residency in Princeton, the people I'm speaking on behalf, have over 425 years of residency in this town. Investments in the building improvements they've done to their buildings here on Main Street, it exceeds over $2.5 million. These individuals, these business owners, the brick and mortars, they bring tourism here. These individuals as a group donate to charities. These individuals and as a group have royal filings. These individuals and this group pay real estate taxes, pay utilities, pay for garbage services, pay, pay sales tax. And I mention those items because those items were brought up at the last meeting, of things that people do for this community. They, as a group, do that. What we're here to talk about tonight is this ordinance, and mayor, you said to us last two weeks ago, bring me the ordinance, get together, talk about it. And that's what we did. We met, and I met these individuals, I didn't know 90% of them until last week. And they are great people, hard workers, and they believe in this community. They want this community to succeed. Not one of them does not want success for this community. So we did that. We wrote up the ordinance. Can I approach and give the ordinance to the council? Get your ring. Thank you. In the pack that I gave you, there are two items. The first item is the ordinance that we generated to allow you to look at what our position is in this case. The second item is an Illinois Supreme Court case. This Illinois Supreme Court case was handed down in January 2021, LPM versus the City of Chicago. This case dealt with all the issues that are on the table for this community, and all the issues that people that brought forward to you were their concerns. It was Cupcake Courage for cupcakes versus the City of Chicago. There was hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on this case. This case went to the Illinois Supreme Court, and the issues that had been brought before you and the emotions that brought before you were addressed in this case. The Illinois Restaurant Association, who employs over 500,000 people, who bring $30, $30 million to the state of Illinois, supported the brick and mortar in this case. And in this case that you have, what happened was, the City of Chicago, not saying they don't want food trucks, decided they had to regulate it. And I think that's what we're saying here. We're not saying there's no room for food trucks, but it has to be regulated. And the analysis and the issues involved with the attorneys in this case were brought to the court, and with the Supreme Court, we're talking about seven justices, decided was the following. That the brick and mortar restaurants bring stability to the neighborhood, that they pay property taxes, that the brick and mortar have vested interests in seeing neighborhood grow and thrive so business can flow through the community. Long-term sense of cohesiveness that brick and mortar brings to the community cannot be ignored. Also, a brick and mortar establishes a permanent spot for tourists to, to, to go to. And why that's important is this. The City of Chicago regulated the distance the food trucks could go to a brick and mortar food. It was 200 feet. And, and the Food Vendor Association fought it. The food vendors fought it. And the Illinois Supreme Court said, we're going to give credence to the brick and mortar when they agree with the community. We want a stable community. We want a stable city. And these justices agreed with that. They said 200 feet was reasonable. They said that the concerns of the brick and mortar were reasonable. And they found in favor of the brick and mortar. I certainly don't want this council and this city to walk down that same path. I hope we don't have to spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars to go through what's already been done. The ordinance I presented to you highlights some of the effects. We're asking for the 200 feet distance between the food vendor and a brick and mortar that serves food. We're asking for a limit, four hours on a permit for the food vendors with the day they use. Also, we're asking for it to be at the parks. That's it, at the parks. That's what we're asking for in our ordinance. Now, at the meeting we had, we had a food vendor there, and we listened to him. There was concern about, the ordinance was put out through social media, and the concern was allowing food vendors to have access to the place you're allowing to have it. And we would ask some type of due process for that food vendor, so that the same truck is getting the same spot every time. Some type of due process for that vendor. But you'll see the ordinance that we presented as a group, and we all agree upon, that that's how we feel about this issue. It was hard to sit back two weeks ago, but we wanted to listen and take it in. And that's what a community builder does. These people are community builders. These people took time out of their day to meet with us and everybody to help you make a tough decision, and it's a tough decision. So I think everybody in this room wants Princeton to be a success. There's no doubt about that. But that's not done by decisiveness. That's not done by name-calling. That's not done by saying, "Try harder." That's not how you build a community. You build a community by giving good service and working together on issues like this. And we're not going anywhere. We've invested too much in this community. These individuals I'm proud of, they're hard workers, and I'm proud that they asked me to speak on their behalf. We would ask you to look at our ordinance very seriously. We would ask you to look at the Supreme Court case very seriously, and we ask you to adopt our proposed ordinance.
Just one clarification. This is basically our ordinance with these three changes.
There, yes. What I did is I took your ordinance, put it in PDF, and we agreed. We went through, we went through every section, and we, we agree with the majority of what your ordinance said. But when you use common sense and you look at the case law, you look at concerns and the investment of this group, we feel far outweighs the sections we changed far outweigh to let just stay the way it was. Our concerns were talked about earlier. Safety, noise, taking up parking spots. And thankfully, the North Side is getting more business, not just brick and mortar restaurants. More business is coming, and you've got to be concerned about spaces for parking. And the distance from the park isn't that far from where these businesses are at. It just makes sense. And the Supreme Court agreed, and we ask you to adopt our, our proposal. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Joshua Hellrum. Fairly new to Princeton. I just want to say, if the changes that Nick mentioned are implemented, I don't really see a reason that they can't be parked in front of Beryl Society's facilities in the park, one parking spot. I just want to say, like, I've only been to Beryl Society once and a food truck once. I go to the brick and mortar stores all the time, and when I recommend places, I recommend Beryl Society and Car Tavern, who I live right across the street from. Go there every Monday for chicken. It's delicious. I just want to say, I don't see there's, shouldn't be a reason not to have what Beryl Society needs and brick and mortar stores need, and I don't think they need to be moved to the park. Thank you.
Josh, how do you spell your last name?
Hellrum. H E L L R U N G.
One more time, so I'll look.
Sorry. H E L L R U N G.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Hi. Natalie Gibson?
Pull your mic down a little bit.
Yeah, sorry. I'm a little short.
Speak a little louder.
Yeah, okay.
You're good.
All right. Well, I never thought, living in Princeton, Illinois, I would have the opportunity to say that there is a big, heated discussion about food trucks. Well, we want some rules in place to make sure things don't get out of hand, which is necessary. Instead of chastising Nick for how he's been operating things, I would urge you to take him more as an example, especially today, as what he has stated, he has already taken into consideration and is willing to change. He mandates order by making sure that there is only one operating at a time, and as I've stated before, Chicago has had a problem with this, but we are not Chicago. We are a small town. We are a small town. We operate on a small level. We do not have 200 food trucks operating and competing with our brick and mortar businesses at once. He lets them take up parking spots in his own business, in front of his own business, does not ask them for any money, but just offer the services that they provide and that they are long gone before the state ordinance states that we cannot have allowed releases in town, though it is something that he has stated he has already worked on. As for location, keeping them central keeps them in the heart of Princeton. They're able to walk around and explore the many shops in the area afterwards and before. As stated, as I've been sitting in line, people have said, oh, let's check out this shop, let's go over here. I think that it's a good thing to bring in people into that area. It becomes an attraction to all the things that make Princeton great, and it offers us as Princetonians a fresh new thing each entire week that we bring some food trucks in. Food trucks have been a way for our local businesses to adapt and to join together to lift each other up, something Nick is very passionate about, esteemed by his collaborations with Flowerhouse, UJ Weaver Records, Pizzano, local breweries, and even local woodworkers, Elise Swinford, and Ken Meatham. I still look around and see so many familiar faces. It is because of that sense of community Nick has built around his little building. And community is all that matters in times like these. I say let them continue to bring more growth to Princeton and let them continue to lure in more crowds to see what our little city is all about, and let them do so proudly in the main streets of Princeton. Thank you.
And was it Natalie Gibson?
Yes, correct. And it's Natalie with C E.
Okay.
Hi there. You want my name?
Yeah.
Okay, it's Chris Nesbit, N-E-S-B-I-T-T. All right. How you doing? So I just wanted to come and just, I've lived in Princeton maybe like 10 years now. It's a wonderful community. I liked a lot. Okay, a good small town. I just wanted to say that in support of having food trucks in town, I know you aren't, I guess, I'm just saying, I'm for it. So with that kind of sentiment, I just want to mention that, you know, it's not a zero-sum argument, I don't think, that it's not to say more food trucks is going to be less business for any business in particular in town. I mean, I've lived here 10 years, I'm not from here, but, you know, I've seen the businesses come and go, and I don't think that a food truck will really affect that as far as making them go. So I think, again, more business in our town is going to bring more business for everybody, I think, you know? I disagree with some of the, some of what we've heard maybe tonight as far as kind of restraining Princeton the same way we restrain, you know, Chicago businesses with, you know, Chicago-style ordinances. You know, I don't think that it's fair to restrain the businesses in Princeton, any business in Princeton, based off of what they did for big cities like Chicago. Okay? That's just where I stand. And then I think that telling food trucks that they can't operate in our populated, popular areas, both on the south side and the north side, or if for some reason somebody wants to open up a business up there by the gas stations and all that giant, what, you know, a food truck should be able to go there too within, as long as they're within the ordinances. I don't think that we should restrict them to one necessary part of town or not. You know, I don't think that's fair to the businesses on the north side, east side, west side, south side, whatever side. Just saying, and then I know I'm taking a lot of time. I think that a nice solution to where the Barrow Society is, because that area seems to be getting a lot of traffic in general, just kind of wave food trucks, is maybe if we put like some, another crosswalk somewhere nearby, I was there with my son, and I got to hold his hand, he's little, and it was hard for us to get across the street just to go to, not the Myrtle's place, but the place on the same side of the street there, you know? You know, it's just hard to cross the street there, and it's hard for traffic to see, so another crosswalk, you know, I mean, look at her, it'll slow people down anyway. So I think it'll solve a lot of problems, you know? That's all I got to say. I was really nervous. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate you opening it up to the community builder. That will be a lot to us, so thanks.
You did well. Thank you.
All right.
Anyone else?
I'm also as nervous as now. My name's Elise Swinford. I live in Princeton, born and raised. I have the delightful pleasure and privilege to work for a lot of businesses in Princeton, not because I don't know how to keep still, but I don't know how to not work. I have had the pleasure of working in Flowerhouse, where I get the pulse of all the things. I have worked for Nick as an artisan, and he trusted me and invested in me as a small proprietor of a tiny little business. And I work for Lorvicker Gardens, and I see a ton of tourists out there. I have just a tiny little story, but almost every weekend that I work at Flowerhouse, I have somebody I've never seen in any way, and that's like happens in Flowerhouse all the time, but they're coming for Barrow Society. I see a couple every weekend from Quad Cities that come and bring our city. They're commerce, and they're coming not only for the experience that Nick has created in his building and his camaraderie, you've met him, he's very friendly, and I don't have to do his accolades here, everybody's heard that at this point, but because of that community and how he's sold Princeton, he's not selling Barrow Society, he's selling Princeton. And putting a food truck in that one little parking spot, I don't think it's going to really hurt any other businesses, especially since he is speaking so highly of everyone else in his community. Unfortunately, this has brought out a little bit of tension in that district, and everybody loves our town, so it makes sense that it would be some hard feelings. But, you know, that's, I guess, my two cents there is I have a really nice perspective of who's coming and who's going and what people are saying, and mostly it's only positive from outsiders about that experience there. Thank you very much.
Hi there, my name's Ally Krug. I live off Pine Street. I'm originally from the suburbs, I've been out here 14 years. And there are a lot of people coming from out of town to visit Princeton. And what's drawing them in is what's happening at Barrow Society and business in stone at that end. There's a lot of excitement, people are excited to come to Princeton, they want to see what's going on, and Nick is only trying to draw in positive. I have been very impressed with the things that Nick has offered at Barrow Society and has offered to our community. It is not about him. It is about doing best for Princeton and what is best for Princeton. Nothing is about him or for himself. I think we've seen that over and over. He's constantly giving back. I think the food truck thing is a great idea. It takes a couple spots, I understand that, but I think it's drawing in people, not just from Princeton. You talk to anybody in line or outside of this business, they're from Peru, they're from wherever in this area. Some people are coming from Peoria. I think it's doing a great, a great thing for Princeton. Thank you.
Ally, how do you spell your first name?
A-L-I.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Steve Kelly, I'm Rick Logan. Excuse me. I own the building to the north of Barrow Society. And what I can say is that I've been in the building, both upstairs and downstairs, when the food trucks are there. And it does not create an issue, at least for me. And it doesn't seem to create an issue as I'm downstairs looking out and seeing what's going on. The taking up of one parking space does not create an issue for people moving around the north end of the district. Even when I'm upstairs, when the generators are working, it is not overwhelming. It is something that if I'm going to live and be on the north side on a main street in Princeton, or any city for that matter, there's going to be noise. And it's within a certain period of time, and I know it's going to stop. It doesn't prevent me from doing anything else. It does not prevent me from meeting with anybody else in my office or being able to enjoy the time up in my apartment when I'm working on the apartment. So I'm in favor of allowing food trucks on Main Street. And especially if they are associated with a particular business, they should be able to be in close proximity to that business as long as, and it doesn't too greatly affect the other businesses around them. So yes, there probably needs to be some regulation, but we need to take into consideration the needs of everybody. And having that food truck taking one spot right across the business, I don't think harms any other business around. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I know I already talked, but Nez kind of sparked something, and I had a little nervousness and forgot something. May I approach one last, one last comment?
Sure. Go ahead.
What Nez said. Guanlin Baxter, again, Main Street. I've lived there for two years now, right above Barrow Society, so I come and go off of Marquette and off of Long Street often. It has always been an issue to turn left or right out of there, so that crosswalk idea that he had is absolutely beautiful. I don't think that it has much to do with the food trucks being there. I have read all of the comments. I overwhelm myself with reading the comments on Facebook about it, and I have seen that. And while I do understand, living here, living in that spot for two years, I don't think that the food truck is the issue. It just is an issue. So a light for painting it bright yellow, you know, right on Marquette or right on Long, where you're not even supposed to be blocking the intersection anyway, I think would aid the safety of Princetonians and anyone visiting. That is all. Thank you.
Since we're a lot of repeaters. Steve Kelly again, thank you. Couple things. Couple of this comment about Princeton versus Chicago. Well, that case I mentioned, it was talking about preserving the stability of the community. It was very important. Chicago can lose a street, a line of businesses, and continue. I'm not sure that we can. We don't want to lose our brick and mortar. We don't want to water down our brick and mortar. And that's what that case talked about, the importance of these businesses and the safety of dishes. Think about it. Use a council, use a mayor, don't want to create a dangerous situation. And we all know there's been complaints. And just by working on it, doesn't release you from liability. If you create a hazard, you're responsible for it. So you got a lot on your plate, a lot to think about, not just about business, but also about exposure. Thank you.
Steve, real quick, this, I'm familiar with this Illinois State case. I've seen this Supreme Court case. This came out of Supreme Court, so it rules the entire state.
Correct. So the, more interesting about that case, not to jazz, Chicago put GPSs on the food trucks. That's not concerning, they worry about watering down, destabilization of the community, the business. That case allowed GPSs to be put on food trucks. Think about that. So was that important to them? There was a lot of money spent on that case, a lot of attorney, attorneys, a lot of fees, Restaurant Association, Mobile Vendor Association, and every court heard it unanimously. Each justice said and found in favor of the brick and mortar. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Or twice? Anybody in the room wants to come in? No? Okay, so I will go ahead and close this public comment period, and we do have a public comment period at the end of the meeting as well, so you guys will have no opportunity to speak in the light. So we'll move on in approval of minutes to Commissioner. And before that, if anybody would like to leave, you can. We always give that opportunity. We don't encourage anybody to leave. We've never encouraged anybody to leave a meeting, but we do offer the opportunity. Okay, so go ahead.
I know that we approve the mayor from our regular council meeting on April 19th, 2021. Second.
Motion has been second. Comments? Full roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'm going to go through approval of invoices to City Court Nelson.
In the Department of Account, let me start all over. In the Department of Accounting and Finances, we have invoices this period totaling $48,508.55. In the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, we have invoices totaling $310,814.53. In the Department of Public Safety, we have invoices totaling $501,770.80. And in the Department of Public Property and Utilities, we have invoices totaling There, all council members present have confirmed their reviews of all invoices, and now we're submitted for disposition.
I know that we approve the invoices as presented, or the invoices as presented, excuse me.
Second.
Motion has been second. Comments? Full roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. I'm the主任 of Business and City Court Nelson.
Next on the agenda is a Resolution R-21-013. This is a resolution appropriating $155,000 in motor fuel tax funds for annual street maintenance. There, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I know that we approve Resolution R-21-013.
Second.
Motion's been second. Teresa, you have anything?
I'll go ahead and speak on both of these resolutions. Just do the first one first. Motor fuel taxes, I don't want to confuse everybody. We get different allotments for motor fuel tax. This one is just standard paperwork that we have to do each year in order to spend the motor fuel tax with IDOT. So we'll pass this, and then IDOT approves it, and we can spend the money. So it's a paperwork process.
Any comments? Full roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-21-014. This is a resolution appropriating $242,000 in build Illinois funds for annual street maintenance. There, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I know that we approve Resolution R-21-014.
Second.
Motion has been second. Teresa.
What I was going to say earlier is that this allotment of the motor fuel is an extra allotment that we've started to get, so even though it's all motor fuel, we have to still spend it separately, per se. But this is all a part of the big package for the street projects that we have scheduled for the summer. Last summer, you probably remember, everything being tore up and the streets being constructed. Quit has a very busy summer coming up because we have the motor fuel funds, but also the sales tax funds going towards the street project. So very big summer coming up.
And I'd like to add that we, prior to passing our sales tax referendum last year for street work, we usually would put about 150, we were lucky to put $150,000 a year into our streets in its entirety. Since we passed that sales tax along with the motor fuel tax, last year we put over $800,000 in our streets. We're going to do that again this year, and we'll be able to do that in the years ahead. So the streets in this town are going to be transformed into a river. Any comments? Full roll.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye.
Next on the agenda is Resolution R-21-015. This is a resolution authorizing partial liquidation of a CD and establishing signatories for that CD. There, all council members have reviewed this resolution and it is submitted for disposition.
I know that we approve Resolution R-21-015.
Second.
Motion's been second. Comments?
Just a little background on what is happening here is there's a CD for the Lovejoy Homestead, and this year being the big year that it is, there's some big maintenance projects out there, one of them being the repainting of the building in its entirety. So we're going to use some of those funds from that CD to help offset those costs because the majority of the because the majority of the Lovejoy Homestead is actually funded by the city. So we need to help offset some of that cost. So go on and see it this year. It's a big year.
Motion has been second. Comments? Oral.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Thank you, Pete. Now go to sitting members' reports.
In your packet, you have the police pension report from March of twenty twenty-one. Last meeting, we had the fire, but we didn't police, so that is included in your packet. One other thing I do want to mention, because I forgot to bring it up last meeting, is the downstate stabilization grants that I applied for for five of the businesses in Princeton. Two of them were approved by the state, but it's been about a year processed. It's been drawn out ridiculously long. But I was happy to take the two twenty-five thousand dollar checks for total fifty to the two businesses a couple of weeks ago. Bruce Jewelers and Gillian both received those checks. So they're very grateful. It's great to be able to at least give something back during these times to those businesses. And I applaud them for sticking with it because it was quite the process.
Good news. Thank you, Teresa. So now we've got a couple of board appointments. Go to Commissioner Newman.
I know that we appoint the Board Directors of Prairie Memorial Hospital, Lynn Augustusson and Dennis Thompson, both returns ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, or otherwise governed by the City of Princeton OSF Healthcare Affiliation Amendment. This is frankly, we have two members of the hospital board whose terms expired a couple of days ago. And since the hospital's in transition from the City of Princeton to OSF Healthcare, we need those two folks to remain on the board for these last two or three months until this transaction is completed. So that's what we're doing. Second.
Motion has been second. I would add that the transition from Prairie Memorial Hospital to OSF St. Clair Medical Center is to occur July first. So right around the corner. Any comments? Oral.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. Just a couple more things, just to follow up on some of the comments I heard. The food trucks are also allowed to set up in the business districts in the City of Princeton on the private property of businesses with the agreement between the food vendor and the business. So I just wanted to touch on that because I don't know if everyone knows that. Everyone knows that. The traffic uptown, up in the north end, IDOT studies show that thirteen thousand vehicles travel our North Main Street, this street, every day. So when you talk about putting a crosswalk in there, that sounds like a great idea. Unfortunately, it's a state route, and it intersects with the state route at Elm. And you have an intersection there, and it's a light intersection. Again, there are two intersecting state routes. To put a crosswalk where you're suggesting, most likely will be denied by IDOT. That's their right of way, and it would be their decision. It's too close to the intersection, and you've got way too much traffic there. You'd never, never see a crosswalk there, I don't think. Not that we can't ask, but I just, I don't think that's going to happen. Also, I'd just like to mention a little thing on the, you know, everybody appreciates everything that is going on in town. You know, for the last six years, our primary focus, since I've been mayor, because it's been my primary focus, is earth. Princeton has sold Princeton. The last six years, we've done a fabulous job with what we've done up and down Main Street. You know, the businesses that have come into town, the buildings that have been bought, the facades that have been renovated, the interiors that have been renovated, the boutiques that have opened, the shops, the stores, you know, the street concerts that we put on six times a year, the commercials that we have been running in Quad Cities, that in large part is why people come to Princeton. They're seeing Princeton advertised in Quad Cities, and they've been seeing it for the last three or four years. You go in any boutique, and you ask them, "Where are you seeing your customers from?", they're going to tell you, primarily, a lot of them are coming from the west, western part of the state. Last year, we started advertising in Peoria, and this year, we're talking WGN-TV. We might start advertising sparingly, very expensive in Chicago, but we're looking at advertising up there to bring people down, you know, especially from the southwest suburbs. So we have been marketing. Our Chamber of Commerce, you know, before with Kim and now with Jenica, you know, as well as they're also act as our principal terms and directors, have done an absolute fabulous job with all their, you know, promotions that they hold throughout the year, such as Spring Flame or Spring Flame and others. You know, we do, we've been marketing Princeton for six years. Princeton has grown leaps and bounds in the last six years. We've been bringing people to town consistently in the last six years. We were recently named by one publication as the third most charming small town in the state of Illinois, behind Delena and Woodstock. It's a pretty heady company, and that is a result of what we've been doing for the last six years. So I get a little offended when I hear people say that, well, they don't say, they don't recognize what's been going on here in Princeton the last six years. We've got a success story here, and it's going to continue. And businesses have come, they have opened up, they add to what we're doing. They add to the success that we've had with earth, and that will continue. So just wanted to throw that out there. And I think. I think that's it. So now we'll go to any old business line counsel. This is when the city council gets to old business, new business, when they get to speak if they like to on any old business. Any old business. Any new business?
I'm not a council member, but can I say something? So it seems kind of relevant with the audience that we have. I don't know if any of you are aware of it, but the state of Illinois released several million dollars in restaurant revitalization funds. The application starts today. I'm assuming that maybe you guys got notification of it, but if not, I would encourage you to go to the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity website and check out the details of the revitalization funds that are available for different types of reasons, mostly for those residents that have been hurt by COVID one way or another. So today, like I say, today is the first day of application. I think it goes for twenty-one days, or something like that. But it's first come, first served. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business, one more time? Okay, now we're back to public comments. So if anybody has a public comment, that they did not, that something new from the first public comment. Just don't repeat old news.
No, I would like to bring something up. If you're talking about bringing people in from the west, I was told this weekend that after a thirty-dollar worth of chocolate bars, ended up all the conductors for Amtrak's fiftieth anniversary, that we're the only depot that's not open. And someone is deeply concerned about that.
I have a rough idea, I don't know who that is.
I think you ain't lying to me. He's got your telephone number.
I know.
He would greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
I'd also like to say real quick, you know, as far as, you know, continuing to progress Princeton, you know, we do have a depot committee that is meeting, and they are currently meeting, they have been meeting, and looking at renovating the depot campus. You know, putting a cul-de-sac in at the Amtrak station and repaving, well, actually not repaving, but paving the parking lot at the depot. We're the only Amtrak stop between Chicago and Quincy that does not have repaved parking lot. And we are looking to do that next year. So we are definitely, without question, we continue to move, we continue to progress, and we'll continue to do so. Any other public comment? Anybody from the other room? Oh, there, yeah. Shut the lights on. So I'll go ahead and shut down the public comment, and I will entertain motions to adjourn and re-meet.
Okay, Mayor. I know that we adjourn our regular regular meeting segment, and next meeting is our next regular council meeting on Monday, May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, seven o'clock at City Hall. Second.
Motion has been second. Coral.
Councilmember Newman.
Aye.
Gomez.
Aye.
McCransky.
Aye.
McCall.
Aye.
Mayor Querom.
Aye. This meeting is adjourned, and I thank you all for coming. It's great to see such a great turnout, good discussion, both sides. Really appreciate it. Like to see this every few weeks. Thank you.